And just, again, cursory glance over my data because I don't have time to pump all this right now, pump the numbers right now. But it's somewhere around eighteen thousand or so, let's say on the high end of qualified voters. So if we take one-sixth of eighteen thousand, that's three thousand people on average, give or take, for a typical turnout, that's our mean, as opposed to median or mode, which, if I go back to my calculator here, is if we're going to have one polling location, it's going to need to be able to handle two-hundred-and-fourteen people, voters, per hour. So if, assuming that that's evenly distributed over the hours, which we know it's not, we know that the overwhelming majority of people are voting between, say, five and eight P.M., when they close. So that means that, at the very minimum, you're going to have to have a location that can handle that volume of voting. I think we have maybe one, and that would probably be the high school, which is almost in Brookfield, and is kind of a long drive for folks in Galerisville, the north end of Northville. Otherwise, I don't even know what that facility would be, and frankly, it would probably have to take place in the arena. So take that for what it's worth. I'm not here to say whether or not that's a good or a bad thing, but that seems to me, otherwise, totally infeasible to have it be reduced to one location, so there's your data. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody else from the list, Mr. Mayor?
Anybody from the council?
I would like to also have, for the record, Stephanie, that when we did talk about the move from the district of some of our residents in Galerisville going down to Oddfellows, that was due to redistricting by the state of Connecticut. Had nothing to do with the town or the voter registrars. That was the state adding additional districts. When that happened, our district changed to Sixty-seventh. We also have a new district that's down at the Walnut Church area there as well. So just so the public is aware, didn't have anything to do with the voter registrars or the town in New Milford, that was the state of Connecticut. Anybody have? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I read here in the public meeting, it says, "To one location for municipal budget referendum."
Yes, sir.
So what are we talking about? Big votes or a referendum?
A referendum.
The budget referendum, the may vote.
I don't know if people understand.
And then we go back.
So you're not losing the big, you know, okay.
Yes, sir. Katie?
Yeah, I don't know the process that you went through to figure out what you said about how many votes or how much money or whatever, but I will say this: I have lived here forever, as my family has, and I don't understand taking a place that somebody, as Jackie mentioned, you get the reminder, you drive by it, and that sounds silly, but that is how some people think about remembering to vote. I don't personally think we have a statistic that's going to say, "If you put everybody in one place, it's going to be better than it has been." But it has been what it's been, and that's what we have worked on for all these years. I don't know if you want to go back to nineteen-sixties or seventies and see if that was any different, but people were coming to a voting, polling place that was near them. And I think it's unfair to some people to change it. More than that, I think it will be extremely confusing that you're going to say to me, "Okay, now I want you to go here, but, oh, right, now it's this year, I want you to go back to where you used to be." I think that there is more information about how much money it's going to save. You're still going to have to take all those voters, you're still going to have to have people at the machines, you're still going to have to do something about the fact that if it's Pettibone, I mean, maybe Mike is right, the high school is probably the best place, but there's no lights, there's not enough, I mean, there's some restrooms, I guess, I shouldn't say there are not enough, but the bottom line is, that is a building that by order of an executive order is being used the way it's being used. If you change that, we have to have lights, we have to paint the lines in the parking lot, we have to do a lot of things. And frankly, why? If we have all places we can go that we know where we go, and the people that are there take us in, and it's all perfectly fine. So I and several of my neighbors are very happy going to where we go, and he asked me to let you know that, I won't name them all, but, again, I think, if, and I said this out loud, is that I think if we were ever going to change for anything, we should change our voting to Saturday. The town of Sherman, lots smaller than we are, they vote on Saturday, and, boy, everybody, but the little kids come out, and even they come out and try to vote. So if we were going to try something, let us vote where we're used to voting, until such time as we have mail-in or electronic or whatever it turns out to be. But maybe try something that we know works for some towns. I'm not saying it, I know it would work for us, but that's something to consider. That's all.
Alex?
Thank you. Okay, so, at first, I thought it was a good idea, and then I started thinking it through, and I also heard, and we spoke last time, that Scotticoke and Northville usually bring in the largest numbers of voters. Well, that would mean that those folks need to travel now to Pettibone, and that's worrisome for me. That makes it harder. And the reminder, as Jackie said, of where the polling place is, and it's right near my house, and I'm going by it. Now, my polling place is Scotticoke, nowhere near my house, thank you, redistricting, but at least I know I'm going there, and I don't have to go through town and all the traffic. So I think if we start confusing people with, if it's a referendum, you go here, and if it's any other general election, you go here, that's confusing, and we don't get the numbers to begin with. We're going to reduce our numbers, and I am also concerned that there will be people who are disenfranchised about voting at all. We've already lost some. Our percentages are low for referendum in recent years, unless we have a big conversation going on, then that changes it. But I would like to hear from more people by a vote than six, seven, eight, nine percent making decisions about our budgets. And the people who own property and pay taxes in New Milford are eligible to vote, so I totally agree with the Saturday, switch to a Saturday, because many of those people come for the weekend, and while, if you're still doing in-person voting, it's much easier, and Saturday would definitely, I think, improve the numbers, but who's to say?
Yeah, I, you know, I have some concurrence here with my colleagues. I had mentioned at the last meeting, I thought Saturday was a better experiment than reducing it down to one polling place. I feel the same as everybody here. We have enough, as Michael said, we have a sixteen-point-zero-three mean, and if you look at some of the numbers from some of the years past, it's pretty bad. I'm all for saving money, and I get the effort, and I applaud it dramatically. I'm just nervous that there's going to be that confusion, like, and you hit it right on the head, Alex. I go here to do this, I go there to do that. I do this a couple times every other year, I'm not sure where I'm going, but I always go to referendum every single year. I think it will be difficult. I applaud the Saturday opportunity. I think, you know, while, as Paul said, it may be difficult getting some people to come into town, but I think, you know, people run in between ballgames, I mean, we do the vote when? It's before school is over. So people are in town, they haven't gone away for their summers, they're still kind of in, you know, getting their kids here and there mode. I think Saturdays would work great, but I'm not in favor of reducing the polling places. I think it's going to hurt us. Thank you. Does anybody else from the council?
Just real quick, again, I agree with all of the council members, accessibility and representation, and one more incentive, the reminder, so, obviously, in November, we always know every couple of years that they vote, but sometimes in May, people overlook the referendum. We're talking about over a hundred million dollar budget, which is pretty important to the local, and to have the reminder and accessibility and representation for that, I think I would be in favor of keeping it as it is. Changing it today, we could talk about the chief of polling at eight, just because of that time of year, reminder would be more important, because a lot of people don't think voting in the middle of May as opposed to voting in the middle of October.
Any other comments?
Good. From last week's conversation, where it was heading, I think we're in agreement with the idea of moving it to Saturday. Pretty much for us, it's really just, we would like to have it logistically eight A.M. to eight P.M. Oh, sorry, nine A.M. to eight P.M., if we do it on a Saturday. Keeping it the same location is totally fine, we all brought up very valid arguments for that. It's more the case, like, do we need to do anything, like, submit stuff, or do resolutions or anything to actually kind of do that? Will you guys?
Yeah.
Last question, state, you know, how?
Yeah, nothing with the state, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
She'll be here.
Yeah. Katie?
So the nine to eight, you're saying, because it's Saturday, we why they're at six A.M.?
Because it's Saturday, and I don't know if you've ever done poll working from five-fifteen A.M. to nine P.M.
But I've got up at six o'clock, so I understand.
Yeah, that's literally, that's why, it's because it's like, it's less stressful.
Do you know if, in our state or anywhere around it, they do that?
Yeah.
What does Sherman do on Saturday?
I don't know about Sherman, but Ridgefield, they do later.
They do for Saturday?
The state has its, like, it's, I forget how many hours, it has to be eight hours, but it can be one, it could start at noon, for all they care. They just say it has to be at least eight hours.
Has to be from noon to eight.
And nine, nine to eight seems like the best kind of hours.
So if you went to work on Saturday, I mean, theoretically, because you'd have it from nine A.M. to eight P.M., there would be time to?
Yeah, people wouldn't have to get up as early and have more time to prepare.
No, I get you.
It's tough on those poll workers. We poll pick all those tabs at the end of the shift, we go back to headquarters, they're exhausted. Yeah, first of all, I want to applaud you both for the out-of-the-box thinking, bringing this forward. Like Tom, I think we appreciate trying to save money. We look at the overall twenty-eight thousand dollars, you look at the overall budget between town and schools, that's less than point-one percent of the overall budget. So, wow, on one hand, twenty-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, on the other hand, when we're talking about people's voice in their own taxes, I think we want to make that as accessible as possible. And I agree that doing one polling place for one election and another for another is going to confuse a lot of people. So I'm all for Saturdays. I think that's, and you talk about children, I think that's an opportunity for more people to bring their children in the voting booth with them.
Right.
Absolutely.
One thing, too, to bring up, I was talking to some school people I know in the area, was that when we have, you know, we have in May, we have during school days, it's the only elections that are, like, in the middle of the school day, and sometimes two or three, and May to June is like, that is their testing time, so it's even more chaotic. And I don't know, they didn't know for sure if they have to pay for access security or not, they have their normal, like, in-house people, but I don't know if they have to, like, station people near the polling location, and they have to block off certain areas. This would remove that quite a bit, you know, so they just have a smaller staff of people to watch the building, only have one door open, so.
Yes, the main reason why we're brainstorming to come up with a, oh, I'm sorry, the main reason why we're brainstorming to come up with a, you know, try to save money for the taxpayer due to the fourteen days of election. Just picture fourteen days, it's like having fourteen districts, so the number, it's double, twenty-eight times two. That's, that was the reason why we were trying to, you know, bring it to one place, but we didn't have enough budget to do the research, the lights and capacity and everything, so that makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Josh, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Would you want to speak before we?
Absolutely.
Before we shut down the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, members of the town councils, my first time, and I'm nervous as hell talking in front of you. Before I give you my point of view, I just want to tell you the position I'm coming from.
You've got to tell your name and address, sir.
Your name and address.
Oh, Ron Arden, fifty-four Cannonwood Lake Road North, New Milford. Okay, I'm probably the newest resident to New Milford here. I've only been here, I think, three or four years. But I want to give you a little bit about my background while I'm listening to this discussion. In addition to my clinical background, I spent over twenty-five years in corporate America working on what's called consumer insights, shopper involvement, and psychology of why people buy stuff. And I ran the entire Eastern Seaboard for a small company you may know that's now at Costco called Coca-Cola. It's what motivates people to buy, what motivates people to engage in things like voting. And there's a lot going on from opportunity costs and other dynamics we're failing to pay attention to. Yes, it may save X thousands of dollars, but the downside risk and the opportunity cost that it could cause the involvement, which is what we want to do. Sixteen, thank you for those stats. One in six for a referendum? Now think about all the people, all the households that have two kids, three kids, four kids, and you're making them drive further. You're thinking about people my age and older who's saying, "You want me to drive from there to do what?" And that number's going to plummet. And what you have to think about is the holistic impact of change like this, and not a myopic perspective of how much is going to save on tangible assets, what about the intangibles? What about the perspective of the voters? I went from, in the short time I've been here, voting for Oddfellows, to Home and Plain, and I went, "Why? Okay, now it's routine, I pass it every day, when I take the back road, I don't go Route Seven." But we're taking a myopic point of view, and I invite the town council and everybody else to think of it holistically. And I think there's much more downside risk to saving X thousand than being presented, and I just wanted to present that point of view. I will share one thing. There was a thing, something called, I started working with Coke with this, somebody may hold on if you're called New Coke? I don't know when that was introduced.
Yes.
And I said to the president at the Coke caller, I said to him in a meeting, I said, "Can you imagine what would happen to us if we didn't have a hundred-and-fifty years of brand equity behind us?" All right, I'll leave you with that, because New Milford's a lot older than Coca-Cola. Thank you, thank you for recognizing.
Thank you, Troy. Good job.
I'd like to entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So move.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everyone, we're going to move in now to our town council meeting. So we're going to rise again?
We're going to rise again.
Let's. Chris, can we leave some questions?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
One with silence for men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting a good fight in Ukraine and those suffering from the military conflict in the world. Thank you. Katie, if we could start the American creed.
The American creed by William T. Kennedy.
I believe in the United States of America as a government of equal by the people for the people whose just powers derive from the consent of the government, democracy and republic, sovereign nation of many sovereign states, perfect union, one and several established on those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which Americans participate, sacrifice their lives for which, and therefore believe it is my duty to my country, to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Thank you. And Sal, can you? We have more public comments.
Mr. Mayor, David Gold. David Gold?
He spoke earlier, Sal.
Okay, he's on the list. Irene?
Drive back to the mayor.
Hi, I'm Irene, two-oh-five Pumpkin Hill Road. Staying on the topic of housing, as we were discussing before, I wanted to sort of talk about a different angle. Local government has a responsibility to the people to provide environments where they can live and thrive. What's happening in New Milford? People cannot afford to find a place to live. I hear this all the time in the supermarket, at Advance Auto, you name it. People cannot afford to find a place to live. We see bulldozed lots at every turn where trees once stood, soon to be replaced by unaffordable housing. The destruction of nature and animal pathways results in more interactions with animals and humans and cars, resulting in bear visits and car accidents. These projects are approved without regard to merit, necessity, or environmental impact. Structures are built and left to the elements unfinished and for what? Affordable housing that is far from affordable, and I'm sure we all pass that monstrosity next to the police station. Meanwhile, residents are forced to live far from their jobs, travel long distances, or live with relatives. This is not a sustainable solution, so what are the alternatives? I actually was talking to someone in one of the bajillion auto stores, and he said, "None of my staff can stay here, they're all moving to Torrington, that's all they can afford," and he's losing staff. The town of New Milford does not want ADUs and the residents to cry "new construction." Is there a solution that can benefit folks who want, just want a place to live? There is if we think outside the box. New Milford really has to take a long, hard look at converting commercial properties into residential. Strip malls stand vacant, large stores are shuttered only to emerge at Spirit Halloweens or twenty-dollar-a-month gyms. The massive parking lots are empty. These parking lots are a land bank, they're going unused. These malls, located along public transportation routes and commuter corridors, can save this town. The lots can be made into what is called naturally occurring affordable housing. The empty storefronts can be morphed into housing either by renovating, adding an additional level, or tearing it down completely, or even by, I know people are going to cringe, I've been in nice trailer parks, even by adding trailer parks, which are a fast, low-cost way to meet housing needs. The sea of asphalt can be replaced by sidewalks and shade and trees and greenery. Instead of chasing an unattainable railroad expansion, we need to create a better public transport system along Route Seven, with shuttle buses going to Danbury, Stanford, and beyond for people who live in this corridor and commute to work. Less traffic on the roads, better for the environment, less destruction of green space, it's a win-win. I'm not done yet, sorry. New Milford can rise to this occasion. This can be done by offering tax abatements to strip mall landlords for housing that is within reach of all. Tax abatements are doled out all the time for developers, along with zoning changes, and now it's time to do something to benefit the people of the town who need housing. The town government of New Milford does not work for these land developers, it works for the people of New Milford. We can be a groundbreaker in this area. We have a need, and it can, and should be fulfilled, so young folks just starting out, folks who need a leg up, and anyone who is having trouble keeping a roof over their head can stay in New Milford and thrive, especially now in the federal level with the Section Eight slashing. We're going to have more people in need, and we really need to, as a community, as moral people, we have to be able to address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Irene, you want to try that in? I'm sorry? Do you want to try that in? Do it nice? Um, okay. I don't need it now.
Okay, anybody else, Sal?
Hello again, I'm Jackie Eaton, six Redwood Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns, and I have some grave concerns. I, too, believe in the oath that we read every week, the America's Creed. I believe it is my duty to my country, to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and to defend it against all enemies, and I will add, foreign and domestic. On June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Time published a piece headlined, "Thirty-One Noble Laureates Warn the Signs of Fascism Are Here." The Italian authors, Alisa Manfredini and Andrea Acquistapace, a hundred years after the open letter to Mussolini, wrote, and I quote, "We must not sleepwalk towards the collapse of democracy," end quote. And attached to their open letter titled, "A Century Later: A Renewed Open Letter Against the Return of Fascism." In the letter, they warn that, quote, "The signs of fascism are here." And the over four-hundred scholars who signed the letter do not agree on everything, in fact, they often debate theories, methods, and ideologies, but they are united in their commitment to democracy, the rule of law, the independence of the judiciary and the press, the autonomy of scientific and cultural institutions, and the dignity of every human being. They also agree on this: "We are sleepwalking towards the collapse of democracy," end quote. I am sharing this here today because of the deafening silence heard from this elected body. Are you, are we, sleepwalking towards the collapse of our democracy? We all want lower taxes, we all have real, everyday concerns, but doesn't that all seem petty in the face of our democracy in crisis? Don't we hold freedom, liberty, and justice at a higher value than what's in our wallets? Can we please have a municipal town hall to address how the Republican administration is affecting New Milford, the state of Connecticut, and our country as a whole? How can we vote in November in good conscience without knowing how you all feel about these urgent current issues and events that are affecting us here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to make a short statement on behalf of the Community Emergency Response.
Your name and your address.
Darrell Kurland, K-U-R-L-A-N-D, twelve Old Mill Road up in Northville, beautiful little scenic dirt road. I am still head of outreach for the Community Emergency Response Team in New Milford, and I just wanted to make a short statement. Summer's drawing to a close. The New Milford Community Emergency Response Team is looking ahead to a busy fall. This summer, we were able to help at the fireworks display, the road race, and more recently, the social services schoolbag pickup. From our vantage point, all of these events went smoothly and safely, which we are thankful for. Thursday this week, we will stand proudly with our first responders and others, remembering and honoring the memory of nine-eleven, nine-eleven, excuse me. Looking ahead, Saturday, October fourth, is Fire Prevention Day. In town, the CERT will be at Pettibone to assist with parking duties, and we will have a table set up to provide emergency preparedness handouts. Two learning opportunities are coming up in October. Firstly, and this is on behalf of the New Milford Police Department and Community Outreach Officer Jake Schneider, the Citizens Police Academy program will run Thursday evenings from six to eight P.M. at the senior center, starting October second, and continuing through November twentieth. Applications are available through the New Milford Police Department by contacting either Officer Jake or the chief's administrative assistant, Christine Gauthrot. Attending this program will afford people greater knowledge about the many roles of nine-one-one dispatch and within the police department, and help foster good relations and partnership between the community and police to help keep New Milford safe. I'm an alumnus of the program, so I'm biased, I admit it, but it was very interesting, and you really will learn a lot about things go on that you never otherwise knew about, and certainly don't pick up from TV and movies. Starting the evenings of October fourteenth and fifteenth, the CERT will hold its next training session for all those interested in emergency management and volunteering with the CERT. The spring class saw us gain three new members. Information is available at our website, www-newmilfordsert.org. We will place signage around town to help publicize the training, and if available, and I have already sent a note to Mike Bacher, we'll employ an electronic sign board again. With all of this ongoing, the CERT, along with our town agencies, we imagine, is already in planning for the big town event of Halloween trunk-or-treat coming up late in October. A quick reminder, however, that New England hurricane season can extend well into October. We've been lucky so far, hopefully will remain so. And that is so even as we begin thinking about winter cold and storms. And, Mr. Mayor, you and I will have the opportunity to do another chat or two about that before the winter season begins. The CERT appreciates your ongoing support, and we will stand ready to help out whenever the call comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Sennell, one-eleven Willow Springs. I just want to speak very briefly towards the homestead ordinance, to which I'm largely indifferent, because it seems to me like it's, and I would love to be wrong about this, but it seems to me like it's just shifting the burden of who's paying the taxes rather than lowering the total burden of taxes upon the taxpayers as a whole. If I were, I'll just briefly suggest that if I had a gun to my head and was forced to make an argument one- If I were, I'll just briefly suggest that if I had a gun to my head and was forced to make an argument one way or the other, and there are arguments in both directions, I personally would make the economic argument, which is that the worst, in economics, the worst thing you can do in terms of taxes is to tax productivity, which would be businesses, which I'm guessing is where this is gonna, in some way, shift towards slightly. But like I said, I'm largely indifferent toward the thing. What I really wanted to come to speak toward is analogues for the legal argument. Because our town attorney offered a few analogues for the legal case that would defend it, and I think there are some better analogues that could be used. For example, the fact that we already treat residential properties differently from one property to the next when it comes to zoning. For example, the number of residencies that can occupy a residentially-owned piece of property is different based on the nature of the property. This is also true of businesses and industry. You can operate a business out of that property which is zoned that way. So we already, in the most dictionary definition of the word, discriminate when it comes to these sorts of properties, in the same way that, let's say, and when I use discriminate, I mean in the same way that someone would discriminate between apples at the grocery store and say, "That apple looks better, I'm taking that apple." So that is a way you're discriminating between the apples, it's a discernment, if you will. So I just wanted to offer that analogy as a, another analog that I hope the attorney agrees with in terms of defending whatever legal parlays may come this way. Thank you.
I don't have anybody else, let's move on.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I do apologize. And this time it wasn't meant in jest. I didn't mean to address this now. But because the young lady who spoke really got to me. She made a point about where we all stand relative to our beliefs in our country. And maybe at some point down the road, we'll get an actual reading and understanding of why several members of our loyal opposition cannot stand during the reading of the America's Creed. We all have our opinion on how we love our country and how we respect its flag. Unfortunately, today we know that there are too many who would like to get rid of our constitution and really don't give a damn about our flag. And maybe one day, the people of the loyal opposition here tonight, the several members, will give a real reason as to why they can't stand.
Last one?
That was it?
Mr. Mayor? Next, the consent agenda.
Okay, item number 4A, B, and C. I'd like to move that we approve the prior minutes, the tax collector notice, and approve the permission for the 9/11 Memorial Committee to accept a donation for their memorial benches, $100--
We're gonna add some more.
Okay.
We just got--
I'm gonna read what it is. $100 from both the New Milford Ambulance, and Kathy Marr. $250 from Walter Bayer. We also have $250 from the Women's Club of Greater New Milford. $500 from Water Witch Hose. $500 from Ezra Post 31. $500 from All American Waste.
Bob's second, did it right? A little early.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
I'd like to move on 5A, that we approve the appointment to the Lanesville Fire Substation Trustee, James Furlough. Term would be September 8th, 2025, to January 31st, 2028.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Item 5B, Mayor.
Thank you. And I know we have Heidi here. Heidi?
Yep. Oh, we got Jackie too.
Right.
And Constitution Week is on the 17th. And I'd like to read a part, Mr. and Mrs. Darnold, American Revolution, who does do such amazing jobs. It's really highlight, not only here in Delaware--
You too, get in there.
--in the United States. And they do so many amazing, great things, I can't wait. Katie, you're here too, right?
Well, I was gonna take a photo if these--
Come on, you two, come on.
And the second man standing here with the mayor--
How about you, Katie? Why don't you get in? Katie, I'll take the picture. Katie?
Whereas on September 17th, 2025, marks the 250th anniversary of the founding of the Constitution of the United States of America. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to patriotic celebration which commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proper ratio each year by the President of the United States of America, designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I depass by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of New Milford, Connecticut, to hereby proclaim the weeks of September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So thank you so much. And you can talk to those that are here, as well as the camera, of the 250th anniversary. And what the subcommittee, what's your chair, and also the director. I'm gonna get out of your way.
At the podium?
The podium.
Okay, I want you to go to the podium.
For the public at home?
The public, in the men's seat.
Hi there, everybody, I'm Heidi Nora Ross, and this is Jackie Gardner. We are with the Roger Sherman DAR. And in addition to the DAR and everything that we do, we are also involved with the America 250 Committee. And we're kind of like ad hoc committee for the town. We have been putting on different events over the past two and a half years now, I believe. It started with the Boston Tea Party, and we've done different events. We've been in the schools with our children, the 5th graders, doing the Cobra Spy Ring, which is a day where they get to come in, spend time with some colonial characters, learn about the role of the spies during the war, and they learn how New Milford was actually involved in some of the Revolutionary War. They get time to decode, so it's right in line with educational stuff for them, and they have a great time. We have did Patriots' Day back in April. We'll be doing that again this coming April, on April 19th. It'll be a special event, because we're also going to be dedicating a plaque that is being donated by the Roger Sherman chapter, and celebrating Roger Sherman's birthday. He's one of the four signers of the Declaration of Independence, that's from the state of Connecticut. And if you don't know about Roger, you can come visit us at the Spirits of New Milford 2.0 during River Fest. And this is a revolutionary storytelling, how different people lived and worked and helped out during the Revolutionary War. So we have some well-known names and faces. Roger didn't live in New Milford during the war, but his wife Rebecca, I'm not sorry, Rebecca Elizabeth, is buried here in New Milford, and so she tells the story of all the wonderful things that he did, both during the war as well as afterwards, in terms of helping to create the Constitution and really get our country going to become a successful country. So we are looking for community members to play with us and have fun, because we have had a lot of fun doing these activities. We are looking for businesses to help celebrate America 250 next year. There are so many ways that businesses can participate. I've heard suggestions like our local brewery may be doing a special can, or a special beer, ornaments that celebrate America 250. There's so many different special logo items that people can do, and we want to have this be a town event. We're gonna culminate it with two really big events next year, which we'll share in the future. But this is really an exciting time, and we really wanna celebrate where we've been, where we are, and all the years in between, and what has made us such a wonderful country that we actually are.
And perhaps you could let the public know they can make a donation to help New Milford 250 be as great as we are trying to make it? And how would they make those donations?
So the best way would be to contact me, and I can share, I can't bring over the exact email address, but if anybody reaches out to reach at rogershermandar.org, that would be the easiest way, 'cause I can't remember our New Milford 250 email off the top of my head.
They can drop a check off at the mayor's office, too, right?
They can also do that, too.
Right, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, okay. So yes, we, we're really excited, and we want our community to be just as excited.
We will be.
Thank you. So to the council, I'm gonna defer the rest of Mayor's comments.
You are, okay.
Yep. And I'd like to move on to number six.
Okay.
Some very exciting opportunity, and we have some special guests here tonight. And our Bridgewater selectman, Mr. Reed is here, and I'll let him introduce his wonderful--
Would you like me to make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Move up to the podium.
I would like to move, item number six, that we work with the State Department of Environmental Protection on creating a monument at the Chief Warmwog burial site.
Second.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity. Bridgewater cooperates with New Milford, and we have for years. Pete and I have gotten a lot of important things done together, and we have a new opportunity that my wife, who's on the Historical Society in Bridgewater, which as you know, was once part of New Milford. We have an idea to do a little restoration project and wanna get the feeling of the people here. So I'll introduce my wife, Julie Stewart.
Mr. Reed, before you go, can you just, for the Director of State, your name?
Curtis Reed, Henry Sanford Road, Bridgewater, Connecticut.
Thank you, Curtis. And Julie, we spoke at the tractor pull event that Bridgewater puts on, which is amazing. And she was telling me about this wonderful idea, and I said, "Wow, this is something that I think would be outstanding for New Milford, as well as Bridgewater, so please."
Yes, so my name is Julie Stewart. I live at 58 Henry Sanford Road in Bridgewater. And I've had the opportunity, both with my Historical Society hat on and as the Executive Director of the Bridgewater Land Trust, to come to appreciate how important Chief Warmwog was to the history of this area. And some people may think that he spent most of his time up on Lake Warmwog, but in fact, New Milford can claim him as their own, because he lived at the top of Lover's Leap, which was once called Falls Mountain. And some of you may know, the Housatonic River flowed through there, and there was an incredible waterfall. The fish came up from the Long Island Sound, and Warmwog actually means "the place of good fishing." But he was a rock star, he really was. He was a sachem, he fought against the other tribes, he was the leader of the Putnoks and the Wiantoks. And in, he died in 1735. And after he died, there was a monument erected there at the top of what we now know is Lover's Leap. And they say that both the Indians and the European settlers were so enamored with him. He was such a great figure in our history, that as people came by through the years, they would add a stone to the monument. And I actually have a photograph of both him, which I might say may not be 100% historically correct, according to the people at the American Indian Institute, but also of his monument. And you can see barely in the background the Housatonic River and the covered bridge that was once there. And I'll just pass this around. In any case, people came through for over 100 years, dropped a stone in his honor, and then in the late 1800s, the Hurd family from Bridgeport came, they purchased the land there. They built a lodge and a castle. And when they did that, they used the stones from his grave to create the foundation and the fireplace of those buildings. And while I understand the head mason was against the move, the owner said it must be done, so the monument was taken down and no longer exists. It may be karma that both those buildings have since been burnt down, and there's nothing left there but ruins. And the state of Connecticut was then gifted the land in the early 1980s, and it is now Lover's Leap State Park. But the land is in the town of New Milford. Us folks in Bridgewater have done a number of presentations about this and the area around it, and also to groups like Friends of the Lake. And people have cheered at the idea of putting something back to honor his history there. So what I'm asking is for your support, not your money, 'cause I think we can raise the money to put something very natural and tasteful there in his honor, but to get your support to request to the state of Connecticut, who owns the land, that there's many of us, groups and organizations in this area, who would like to see this happen.
I think we can do that.
Anniversary.
I think we can do that.
That would be a job for Billy to help with. Yeah. Would somebody like to entertain a motion?
I did.
You did. Do we have a second?
We had--
Okay, Tom seconded it.
Tom seconded it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, much appreciated.
Get going.
Let us know.
So thank you, guys.
Great, that'll be great. All right.
I don't believe we have anybody from the observatory here tonight, I don't think.
No.
Yep. They're gonna be at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And the next one is number eight. I'll save my comments to the very end.
Okay, so item number eight. I'd like to move that we extend the lease agreement with Three Veterans LLC for the recycling center till September 30th of 2028.
Actually, 2030, because it was a five-year lease before. And to continue it, it'd be a five-year--
I restate, 2030.
So I apologize for the scripters there.
Have a second?
We have a resecond.
Is that you? Tom? Okay.
And this is the exact same lease that this council voted on before. As we all know, that Three Veterans has done such a tremendous job recycling. They've opened up on Sundays for our residents. They've done, as we've seen before, a phenomenal job with bottle redemption. So they're not on the side of the streets, not in the environment. I think it's a great job, he's expanded the offerings that Three Veterans does. So we have a motion second. Do you have any comment from anybody, any questions? Doug?
Just real quick, I go there often to do my recycling, and it's always a pleasant experience. Bob and his crew down there are excellent, great, and they're very personable and helping you out. So I think it's been a great asset to have them in the community to help out. And they seem very, very busy, and it seems like the public has definitely taken to bringing stuff down there to help them out, so.
Chris?
Yeah, I would really just echo, I think the service levels that they provide is excellent. You go in there, you can get it in and out fast. The prices are extraordinarily reasonable, and I really believe, because of that factor, the service level and the reasonable pricing, that eliminates a lot of stuff that otherwise people would just toss away. So I think they do a great service for the town, so I fully support this.
Tom?
I concur completely, and thank you for picking up all of those nasty little bottles up and down these roads. Anybody who lives within a mile of a liquor store like I do up on New Milford greatly appreciates all the work you do, and echoing what Chris and--
Sal?
I'm going there quite a bit, and the lady probably knows me every now and then, I'm showing up. Well-maintained, absolutely well-maintained, no drama, in and out. Good job.
Katie?
Well, being in the other age limit than a couple of these people, I can tell you that some of us who are more mature are very happy. I have a lot of friends who think that this is nirvana, that they never had anything like this before, that you're all so friendly, and they like the idea of the bottle, money being added up, and you're just all wonderful. So thank you for what you're doing.
Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bob, thank you?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. And we'll get the--
Oh, stop.
We'll have Randy prepare, finish, we'll sign, sign, and all good to go.
Great job.
Okay, so we have 8B.
8B.
Item 8B, like to move that we take an action on creation of a homestead exemption ordinance.
Second.
We have a second, we have discussion. Brian? Does any of the council, we were here for hearing, public hearing? And what we be asking tonight, Randy?
We need-- I may.
We need, if I may.
Yep.
Brian and I have talked about this, I think it needs some tweaking.
Bless you.
Not, nothing that's going to require another public hearing under the, under the charter.
Okay.
But I think we need to, we need to sharpen the pencil, we need some clarification. Did we get that right?
Right, there are a couple of issues.
Okay.
New homeowners, probably should address that.
Improvement, property improvements.
Probably should have some language, uh, more definitive language concerning appeal, so there's going to maybe applicants that get denied, and, uh, because of that, they'll have, you know, it's our, our intent, they should have the right, just like with any other exemptions that's denied.
Okay.
Uh, have the right to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, and then from there to the Superior Court, uh, if needed. So, yeah, so there's some things we'd like, like to address in that regard.
Nothing that's drastic, nothing that's going to require any public hearing.
So, could we be safe to say that we would be putting this on the next agenda?
I think so, Brian.
Good.
May I ask a question?
Katie?
Brian, I have a question, and since the, the topic you just mentioned, it's about, um, new owners, property improvements and things, um, can you say whether or not, for instance, property improvements, if someone comes here, they buy a house, it's their primary residence, and, uh, after a year, they decide they really want to stay here, and they start doing all kinds of things, right? But it's not time for revaluation, you know, I've got to wait four years. When somebody moves in, if you were to see that, they did improve to a big degree, how would that affect anything?
Yeah, so, uh, the exemption is basically a percentage, uh, which will be determined at a later date, of the land and dwelling, the value for the land and the dwelling. So, people make improvements, they put additions on and that sort of thing, so, um, let's say somebody, uh, puts in a accessory, gets approval to put in an accessory unit, they, uh, put a second story over a garage for, for elderly relative. So their assessment's going to go up, right, the next year, while the exemption would, would be recalculated.
It would?
Yes.
Okay.
But the percentage?
Percentage is the same, right. Whatever number the council picks, twenty-two, twenty-five, thirty, yeah.
Exactly.
Percentage of, of exemption would stay the same, but, uh, you know, it would be the same process if somebody, uh, has a vacant lot and they build a house, right? Now that's their permanent resident, they would apply, and they would receive the same exemption percentage, yeah.
Mary Jane?
Yes, Mary Jane.
So, personally, I think we need to go through this whole thing, paragraph by paragraph. There's so many questions, the public has a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions. Like, why don't we start from the beginning and try to really explain it to the public? I mean, you talked about, you know, reevaluation and the thought that, you know, a lot of people reevaluate, it's going to go higher, and people are very concerned that that's going to, you know, affect whether they can even apply to this.
Yeah, so.
So what is, what would be the cutoff? Like, you know, what, what is going to exempt somebody? There's even something in here about one acre of land?
Yeah.
What, what is that about?
Right, so, uh, basically what we want to apply the exemption against is what we call the curtilage, it's the land that's surrounding the immediate dwelling. So, um, everyone has an acre that's assessed as primary land for their dwelling. The land beyond that, what we call excess land, so if somebody owns fifteen acres, uh, then they have, the fourteen acres wouldn't be considered part of the homestead. That, we would apply the exemption against the land and the dwelling. No, no barns, uh, you know, accessory buildings of that sort would apply.
Means if the, the other thirteen acres, they'd be taxed at normal rates, wouldn't be subject to that.
So we're trying, from an administrative standpoint, we're trying to, you know, top, pin down the actual, uh, components of the assessment that are eligible for the exemption.
So, I, I think we're kind of scared the public about, you know, about the reevaluation, you know, that you're really worried that, you know, you know, people's expectations are going to go sky high, and now people are all thinking.
So that's why I, at the last council meeting that I was at in July, right, I went through a detailed analysis of what happened in two thousand, uh, to two thousand and one. There's similar parallels that are going on today, in two thousand and one. Home assessments went up fifty percent, commercial industrial went up around twenty. So we're looking at the same thing here in twenty twenty-five. So we went through that, yeah, I went through the process and showed how the grant list changed, showed how homeowners absorbed a significant ta, part of the tax burden of the town. So the median home, I think the tax bill went up around five hundred dollars, a median home assessment before and after. So, you're right, there are some, uh, that's why, you know, the, the town is considering implementing a homestead to try to mitigate. A lot of that was due to what we call the interclass tax shift, shift from commercial industrial to the residential. So that's what this is really designed to try to mitigate. So, it won't help, like, for example, in two thousand and one, my taxes went up nine hundred ninety-three dollars, so went up more than the five hundred me, you know, uh, average or median. Uh, part of that was due to the fact that my neighborhood just must have been underassessed before, you know, and that kind of thing is going to hap, you know, happens during reassessments. So, again, yeah, those statistics look pretty scary, and that's, I guess, the point of my presentation was to get that across. You're, you're kind of looking at the same, same thing. Real estate, homes are going to absorb a bigger percentage of the grant list due to the reassessment, yeah.
Brian, I wonder if it'd be good to maybe resend that presentation out, because I think your presentation in July really explained what we're trying to do here very well.
Right.
Um, and if anybody doesn't recall that, maybe just resend it out to the council.
But I get your point, Mary Jane, you know, it is kind of a scary prospect.
So, and people are asking me, um, like, so is the town going to be taking a loss? And I know you said it will shift more towards the commercial.
Right.
Which it should be.
Right.
Um, and what, what is this community saying about this, too? Like, are they sure that they're not happy, or what?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, I haven't, I haven't gotten really any commentary from business owners, but that's a good question. I mean, they're probably not going to be too, too, uh, happy about it, um, so.
But, but, but I think you got to be careful with our wording, right? I don't think we're looking to shift more towards the commercial. I think we're looking to keep the balance.
Yeah.
What we see currently. What happened is residential went up exponentially, not exponentially, but a lot more than commercial. Uh, so you try and keep the grant list ratio between residential and commercial the same as it is today, or close to the same, is what our, our goal is.
Right. So, those numbers that we're talking about, those statistics, right, I can't give you those tonight or next week. That's going to be part of the process, you know, we'll send out new assessments at the end of November, there's an informal appeals process, and then I'll sign the list, uh, probably in February, and then we'll have actual numbers. We'll see what happened to business personal property, because that's part of the grant list that's not being affected by, you know, not being re-quote revalued like the real estate, and then motor vehicle, that's another component of the grant list, so that all, you know, is part of the picture, the big picture in the end. And then we can see, you know, what kind of shift there was from commercial industrial to, to residential, you know, we'll have numbers that we can look at.
So, you would right now have a rough idea how many properties would be eligible?
Okay, so, um, there's about ten thousand, single-family, two-family dwellings in New Milford. Um, well, so we'll be sending out applications to those. Um, I'm thinking it's going to be between nine and ten. Obviously, there's going to be, there's homes here that are second homes that, that wouldn't qualify.
But you don't know now.
But I don't know for a fact.
Right.
Right. So, but, yeah, it's going to be probably somewhere over, well over nine thousand, I'm thinking, just guessing.
What's the percentage of the whole houses in New Milford? The nine thousand, what is the percentage of the entire?
Oh, well, the, the grant list will probably be around four point three billion after we're done. Homes make up about three point three billion, so, um, just to give you some rough numbers. But that nine thousand, um, you know, I wouldn't be able to give you a good, a good estimate now.
Understood.
Because we don't even know what percentage we're going to use.
Understood.
Twenty-five, thirty, whatever.
So how are we going to wrap her in that?
Okay. That, that's, okay, that, that's a good question. Um, so I'm going to give you the, the shirt, the shift, you know, between commercial and resident, to residential. Maybe it's twenty percent, let's say. The council, you have the, the, you know, it's your decision on what you use for an exemption percent to try to mitigate that shift. I'm going to give you the numbers that, that, that show that. It's up to, you know, you as a body would have to, I, I'm more of a, you know, I'm the technical man, I'm good, I'm giving you the, the math. You have to decide what that, ultimately what that number is.
Brian?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe that there are many people in our town who have no idea that commercial versus residential, that they're different.
Hmm.
So right now, today, or when you left your office, approximately, what would you say is the average for the commercial versus residential?
Are, are you talking, uh?
The percent, I'm sorry. So you, you just said you thought it was twenty percent.
Percent of the grant list?
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I'm going to say, uh, residential somewhere around seventy percent, and then commercial, vacant land making up the other thirty, I'm, I'm.
Okay, and that leads me into my next question. Vacant land.
Mm-hmm.
So if I owned twenty acres, it's empty, and I don't want to do anything with it, I don't want to grow any corn this year, so how do you approach that?
Yeah, so vacant.
As a resident, as my, uh, fir, my, this is my primary residence?
So, right, vacant la, land obviously isn't, wouldn't be eligible.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
For that property, you could probably put it in four ninety.
Well, I will say that, you know, we do have a tremendous amount.
There are.
The mayor, former mayor knows, tremendous amount of property under four ninety, right, farm and forest.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the four ninety begins at what acreage?
Farm, basically, it's any acreage.
Open space.
Right. Uh, forest, twenty-five acres, you got to have twenty-five acres of forest.
Those are things that most people don't know.
Right. Right. No, those are good things.
And they should.
So, Brian, there was mention about an application process.
Yes.
And that, um, if somebody didn't do it in time, and they won't be able to do it. Can you, can you elaborate on that? So, obviously, you're going to send out the application, say somebody misses it, somebody's, you know, passed the due time to get it in.
Right.
How would they do that?
Yeah, so, we're going to have, that was one of the things we were talking about earlier, we need to have a little bit more language in there about if, uh, obviously new people moving into town.
Sure.
We don't really have any language there, because we need to send them applications when they buy a home, um, and, and move here, at least to determine whether they would qualify. So, um, yeah, if someone, for whatever reason, missed it this year, um, they could apply to next year. It's like we handle any exemptions. We have, you know, for example, we have veterans that move to New Milford and don't file their DD two fourteen with the town clerk until after October, they have to wait till the next year.
So the application would be done every revale?
So, our, our outlook is, when you apply, the exemption is one and done.
Okay.
Yeah, one and done, until you do something that changes.
Right.
Like you change the ownership, you add a son to the property.
Right.
Then you're going to get an application and, uh, to, to reapply and, uh, or, you know, so if anybody changes any, does anything to the ownership, we'll have to send out.
And you mentioned, just real quick, you mentioned that if you added something on, so that would be notified by the building department, would notify you that?
Right.
Hey, by the way, this dwelling was increased in value during build.
Right, that would be just part of our normal building permit.
Okay.
Yeah, process.
Thank you.
So, so two things, I think someone mentioned earlier, talked about, um, the exemption percentage might be looked at annually, but that wouldn't be the case. It would be probably every five years after a revale?
Yeah, I mean, the statute is, says, uh, you know, it's, again, only three lines long, really, and it says, uh, basically, through a resolution of the town council, I mean, you know, so theoretically, you could change it, you know, huh?
But there wouldn't be any real reason to do that until there's a townwide revale, right?
Right.
That's why we're, that's why we're talking about this now.
Exactly.
What about if something happened in the economy that, you know, that we haven't, that would be drastic? Because that could happen.
That's an issue.
Yes, that's right.
That's litigation.
Yep, there you go.
The, the other question is, just a rough timeline, so I'm guessing the next step you need this council, if we decide to, is approve an ordinance. What's the rest of the timeline? And when do you need that by, and then what's the rest of the timeline?
Yeah, so if we were able to do something next council meeting, pin this down, get it passed, then I would send out applications the first week of October, and then.
To everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're using a December thirty-first deadline, so, you know, part of the process, right, for budgets and grant lists and mil rates, you got to have final, finality, so looking at December thirty-first to get that application back, so, so that we can then qualify people, and then, um, so that we know how many properties in town would qualify, and then, uh, go from there in terms of applying percentage. I've got our software vendor, you know, they've already started to do some preliminary work.
When would this council need to come up with the exemption percentage?
Yeah, that would be in February.
February, okay.
In January, early February.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have time.
Do we have a, an idea of what the application is going to look like yet?
Yeah, um.
It'd be great if, I think it would be great if we could actually see that.
Okay, yeah, so I'll get that, uh, out, right, I'll give that to the mayor.
That does make a mistake.
You're, you're basically looking for a primary residence declaration.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, which does not, should not include social security numbers, or anything else. It's your address, it's just like the declaration you sign when you sit down at your mortgage or refinance. You're signing, this is my primary residence, and I, and you're attesting to that. Now, we've known, some people around this country have put those, those on applications in multiple states.
Right.
Right? So how are we going to make sure?
Yeah.
That that isn't it, which, one of my answers would be, go look at the deed and everything in town halls, safe, but what's the answer to that?
Yeah, so, you know, we're close to some other states, right? I mean, in, in New York, they have the STAR exemption, school tax assessment relief, and that's like a homestead. Uh, it's thirty thousand, uh, if you're under the age of sixty-five. If you're over sixty-five, it's, uh, sixty thousand, and if you're over sixty-five or low income, you could, you apply to the state, actually get a credit.
What town was that?
So.
Your state.
So this is in New York State, but, right, they're going to, there are, well, obviously you know Florida, Massachusetts.
I mean, it's six months and a day. How are you going to discern between the guy who's claiming it in Florida and then somebody who's claiming it up here, too?
So, as for the tax return. We're going to be looking at.
That's why I was asking.
Secondary information, so driver's license.
License returns.
Registered. We, I'm also working with Lexus, Lexus Nexus, they have a product called Accurant, and
And once this is all settled, you know, once we have properties that are designated as homestead, I can send them a file with like four fields, their, uh, their name, their address. And then they run it through their database, cuz they know if somebody's getting homestead in Florida, yeah.
It's a public information, right? You can, you can research this.
Yeah, they gather, all this is public information.
Mary Jane.
So, let's talk about litigation.
Uh, good segue, good segue.
I just wanna bring up a point. As town council members, are we covered by KERMA?
You are. You're covered, you're first of all.
You're acting.
You're acting in a legislative capacity. So you're covered by KERMA, and you also have an immunity, a government immunity. Uh, now that's, that's sky's wall.
Okay, cuz I mean, people are saying.
I'm looking at your eyes, Mary Jane. Every decision you made over the last 20 years.
Well, great, I know, exactly, but I would assume KERMA would be covering up for this too.
Well, this is not, please, 20, 30 years. One thing that the mayor and I, we talked about the primary residence issue. One thing you're gonna have to deal with, and it segues into what you just talked about. Has to do with taking the exemption away when you determine that this person is not bona fide, or, and/or Airbnb. There's nothing that says that you cannot have Airbnb, that forget your primary residence and have people stay with you. So Mary Jane made a very good point. To review this thing, step by step for the next meeting, and then be prepared to tap, have real, real questions answered. As far as litigation goes, litigation's always a risk. Um, when I talked, when I talked, I talked to the Fulton County Attorney, he said, are you kidding me? Every day. So the fact is, and that's big, that's Atlanta.
Yeah, it's right down there.
Um, but the fact is, is that, yes, but the court's decisions are on our side. And as Mike pointed out, the rekindoning, which has nothing to do with taxation. Classifications are allowed, the Supreme Court says classifications are allowed. It's not a fundamental right that is protected by the Constitution to get a tax exemption. All you have to show is that there's a rational basis for limiting it to residents, and there's a case, a Supreme Court case. That's just there, or, uh, Supreme Court case that says that. So there is litigation possibility, there's gonna be some wise guys who are gonna say, I got a better answer.
But careful process on our part, on Brian, from Brian's office, on applications. I'm not saying anything bad about the people down in Fulton County. But just saying that, that proper process could get a lot of that out, as you said, Lexus Nexus, you know, finding out a little bit more. Plus, we're a smaller town, you know?
Yeah, but I don't wanna give anybody a roadmap.
No.
But there are other ways.
Yes, I understand.
That go beyond a pledge.
And what about the, the, what about the, the, could happen, something really terrible happens to the economy?
The legislative body has authority to actually repeal that, that ordinance, not permanent, just like any other legislation.
Just so I understand, if we were gonna have economic calamity, we would get rid of the ordinance?
You'd have to have a public.
The taxes, they would go up more on an economic disaster?
Whatever, whatever you do judgment, you determine.
Right, I mean, we're, we're, we're determining what the assess, value, assessment rate is going to be. And we can, don't have to repeal this. Right, you don't have to repeal this ordinance in order to change that assessment.
You can revise it.
You can revise it, you can go from 35% to 45%, it could be whatever that you want.
It's a legislative act.
What, what basis would we have to have to remove it?
A rational basis.
Rational? Okay, there we have it.
We're just gonna adjust the numbers.
I was gonna say.
Wait, yeah, give me that explanation.
Kinda hard to do, never mind, but.
You're just making really an adjustment to the assessment.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, so before it gets to litigation, obviously, if it's, if it's denied through you, we will set up some kind of appeal. Right.
Brian, I talked about that today.
Yes, so we wanna try to get it away from litigation as far as possible, even if it gets turned down, we do an appeal. And then if we can't solve that, then again, that's the last step.
Nobody wins in litigation, except for very good.
Right, so.
And the lawyer.
And how would that appeal? Yeah, so if someone's dissatisfied with the fact that they didn't grant an exemption, we have, they'll get a notice. And then the board, it'll be right before the Board of Appeals meets. And then they can file an appeal with the board, and then they'll take a look at it, you know? They're independent of.
So there are steps before the end-all?
Yes, yeah.
One question, Brian, on the application.
Right.
Which we will see.
Yes.
Is it stated clearly in large font and bold that this is a possibility that you could be, you know, brought, considered wrong? You must be telling us the truth.
Right, or else.
Yeah, we could. We did a ton of the false statement of perjury.
In your language, yeah.
And that would be a criminal?
It's a felony.
It is a felony.
Well, there you go.
If you're claiming your primary residence is here and you're not here, as we've seen in two other multiple states.
Well, yeah, but I didn't know if this was.
Oh, it's a big deal.
Legal level.
Okay. And in the mortgage business for 25 years along with Pete, that was one of the biggest statements you had to sign.
Imagine that?
Oh, yeah.
So felony should be even highlighted there, yeah.
You can tell with the felon, with someone's hands, penalty of perjury.
Right.
Gotcha.
Any other comments for Randy or for Brian?
What, what is the whole process gonna cost to the town?
Yep, so, about 20,000 just for mailings. Um, and then I've been talking to the mayor, we need software modifications done, not sure, probably 10, 10,000 to 15,000 for software modifications to be done. So that this will work with, on our grand list, it's more than just putting a percentage exemption, it is gonna interact with our other types of tax relief. The elderly, the seniors, tax free, uh, our volunteers who get abatements. So we have language in there that this will have to interact with.
And same with veterans too.
Right, same, exactly, same, same with veterans, right.
That's kind of one-time cost, though, right?
So, and then, uh, I'm probably gonna have to hire a couple people to help, cuz my staff of, counting me, of three, is gonna have a hard time dealing with 9,500 applications coming through the door. So there'll be some salary in there too.
Mary Jane made a good point, so you're gonna need some extra money that isn't in your budget.
Right.
So you're gonna have to come for us and look for some money.
Yeah, right.
That's a point, Brian, so you're gonna send this out to every home, every tax, taxable homeowner person, right? Okay. I, I don't get it, the mailman drops it on the way in. Are you gonna follow up? Or is it onus on the, on the property owner? They should, we'll read about it, we'll make it public, the mayor will tell everybody.
Yeah, in all of our mailings, that's typical, right? You know, some people claim they never got the, the increase notice and, yeah, unfortunately.
Check your mail.
Yeah.
Check your mail, that's it. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Any other questions?
So, so we're, we're tabling this.
Yes.
So I'm gonna withdraw my second.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
To table, to table this item, to be.
To the next meeting, then before we.
Do you wanna withdraw your second?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Or do you guys like to add into the, for Stephanie, we did get some people that could not make it tonight? Uh, so the first one is Stephen Pudwano, 767 Kenwood Lake, North South. I apologize for not being able to deliver my comments in person, this is an important issue for New Milford. I wanna be heard and I will be brief. I'm 76 years old and have the privilege of living in Kenwood Lake for 44 years. I purchased my home in late 1970s. The house was much more affordable, which made it possible for me to purchase the house that I reside in. Things have changed greatly since that time. My family moved in the area in 1956. My father was a retail store manager at an electronics company. On his salary alone, he was able to buy a new three-bedroom home with a two-car garage for $14,000, support a stay-at-home wife, and provide a college education for four children. Today, the high cost of living combined with taxes, limited job opportunities, make it difficult for our children to remain here. The inflation rate has far outpaced wage growth. Historically, seven years of labor could buy a house, now it takes 27 years. Many of my friends and lifelong neighbors have left the area. In troubling, it is troubling that the education expenses account for 61.4% of New Milford's total tax budget. Yet many of the very children we invest in are forced to move elsewhere because they cannot afford to live here. In effect, we're educating our children to benefit of our communities. My own son, Joseph, had to leave because sustaining a home and raising a family was simply not possible. Strong communities are comprised of rooted families and neighbors. My family and neighbors are not interchangeable economic units. This is why I strongly support the homestead exemption ordinance. It is a valuable tool to help longtime residents offset the growing tax burden and create the conditions for our children whom we have educated to love to remain in New Milford. Why invest so heavily in our children's education if we do not provide them with economic opportunities to stay and build their lives here? Adopting the homestead exemption ordinance will be a great incentive for our children and those that have built this community, we enjoy and remain here. Next one is Kelly Gioranis, and I apologize if you're watching and I mispronounced your last name. Good evening, my name is Kelly Gioranis. I regret that I cannot be present tonight due to extenuating circumstances, but I appreciate the opportunity to submit this statement for the record. I respectfully urge you to town to consider implementing the homestead exemption to help offset the anticipated rise in property taxes following the revaluation. This is not just a policy issue, it's a deeply personal one for families like mine that need to be advocated for. My husband and I are lifelong residents of the area. He grew up in Brookfield, I in Danbury. We've always had a strong ties to New Milford. Years ago, we purchased land here, and after our marriage and the birth of our daughter, we made the decision to build our home out, a home ourselves. This was not a luxury but a necessity. With rising home prices, high interest rates, and limited inventory, believe it or not, building was the only financial viable option. Over the past two years, we've worked tirelessly to help offset building costs and construction materials. My husband is aging father, building the home on nights and weekends while we navigated the town's building, zoning, and wetlands processes. This has truly been a labor of love, blood, sweat, and tears. We've done everything the right way, worked hard raising our family, and invested in this community. We have pursued what we have once been considered the American dream. Now we're facing the possibility of proportionately high property tax assessment on a home we haven't even begun to move into. Only the main floor is finished to keep costs manageable. I often hear concerns about preserving New Milford's character. I'm often seeing concerns over, uh, vacations homes and commercial developers flooding the area. We don't protect families like ours, blue collar, community minded, deep rooted here, we risk losing exactly what makes this town special. Please consider the homestead exemption not as just a policy tool, but as a way we protect the people who call New Milford home. We are the neighbors you want next door, and without relief, families like ours may find themselves moving on due to the unsustainability of the state mandated revaluation. Thank you for your time and consideration, from my family to yours, we wish you continued health and prosperity. And we had Corey Linder. Dear Mayor Bass, I hope this message finds you well. As a New Milford resident, homeowner, and father, I want to express my strong support for the proposed homestead exemption ordinance. I believe it is a meaningful step towards easing the financial burden on families who live and invest in our community year-round. That said, I do have a few concerns about how the ordinance may ultimately be tailored. I respectfully ask the town council to consider holding additional public meetings focused specifically on the implementation details, such as eligibility requirements, exception percentages, and how fairness will be ensured across different property classes. In particular, I'd like, like to raise the area of setting minimum tax contributions. Uh, from what I understand, these properties have not experienced the same steep assessment increases owner occupied homes. Without a balanced approach, there's a risk of the tax burden relief for homeowners could shift disappropriately to others in the community. I appreciate the effort you and the town council are making to support families like mine, and I believe with more open dialogue, we can arrive at a version of this ordinance that is both equitable and effective. Thank you for your leadership and continued commitment to New Milford residents, warm regards.
Katie, if you make a motion to table, or you just table the, to the next meeting?
Table.
Just table.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the last one, item nine.
So the next one, number nine.
I'd like to move that we, uh, I don't know.
I would say with Randy's approval, that you would take no action, which then would keep it the same.
So we'll take no action on item nine?
Chris?
What if we wanted to consider the Saturday?
That'd be, that'd be a separate.
That'd be a separate motion.
Okay, so that would be.
So I can read this, and then we can just say no.
And just say, we're gonna take no. Randy, would it be best to say?
You actually make a motion second and then deny.
Right, okay.
All right, okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion on reducing the number of polling locations from eight to one for a municipal budget referendum.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
For discussion time?
For discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Wait, voting it?
We're voting, the vote, the sound, the vote that yes would be reducing it.
Right.
From eight to one.
Right.
No, I'm for Saturday.
No.
That'll be the next one.
That's the next one, so.
I apologize.
So all not in favor?
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions, thank you. Next, can we entertain a motion for Saturday?
Yes.
So moved.
Yeah, so add that to the agenda, don't you?
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules. I'd like to suspend the rules to add to the agenda, item number nine B. That, would you like to do this?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so nine B, uh, in that we move to, uh, ex, do you wanna do it or explore it?
No.
That will move our referendum, municipal budget referendums, to our original eight locations for polling and move to Saturday, where the voting would be held between 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? And then?
No, let's just add it, now you have to actually vote.
Okay.
Just adding it.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor?
And I have to make the motion?
I have to make the motion again. Uh, I'd like to move that we, uh, change our municipal budget referendums to Saturdays, the original eight locations, and the voting would be held from 9:00 AM till 8:00 PM in those eight locations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abos?
Okay, no more, no more. Okay, now.
Motion to adjourn.
Before that, real quick.
Oh, 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 no.
Talking about the Bills game.
Just.
No, stop.
Just real, just real quick, for those, a reminder that September 11th, that's this week, at, please come down, 8:30, 8:35, down to Patriots Way, we do the 9/11 memorial. It's important for, for as many of us that can come to attend that, that can. We've done it every year, we've never missed a year here in New Milford. Also, real quick, New Milford Restaurant Week, that starts September 18th through the 28th. And the first night, we are having, uh, uh, the kickoff, which will be at, uh, the, which will be at 19 Main. And there, uh, there'll be 10 restaurants, we have, I believe, 28 that will be participating. You can go to itsrestaurantweek.com, but for the first, uh, kinda the grand opening of it, it will be at the, at the 19 Main. There'll be 10 restaurants, they'll be serving hors d'oeuvres, their foods, and you'll have Sparrow that will be providing the wine and the beer. And, uh, you can go on the website, itsrestaurantweek.com, and you can go to the New Milford site, and you can buy a ticket. And, uh, it's gonna be a, a great event. And, uh, that money will be raised to go to the, uh, New Milford Food Bank as well. And then, yes.
I just have a quick question. How did the ice cream crawl turn out? Who won that? Oh, all right, I didn't want you to stop with where you brought that.
Go back to them? To the, to the ice cream crawl next. So we had, uh, numerous participants, last year we had over 100 that got T-shirts. We're expecting around that, that many as well. Thank you for everybody participating that did go, uh, to participate in the ice cream crawl. And, starting September 12th, 13th, and 14th is the Stars Weekend in the Life Convention. This is the Gilmore's Girl Event, this is the fall edition. And, uh, you can still, I believe, there may be a few tickets left, and they may be sold out. But what's really great is we have our wonderful merchants downtown and restaurants, they're doing their own free events. So you can go down, you can look at the Stars Hollow Gazette. It's on the town, uh, website, town Facebook page, mayor Facebook page as well, where you can see, uh, all, uh, the wonderful things that our wonderful businesses are, are putting for this great event. It's great to see all the people from throughout the country, and we also had people around the world that have come to this event. So it's a, a great opportunity.